All right, it is 7:05. Hi Cathy.
Okay, welcome everyone. I would like to call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
Hold on, I'll go.
Pardon?
Hold on, let me get the flag up. There we go.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our executive assistant Bonnie Ryder will swear in our eight commissioners elects. Stephen Carey, Mike Fisher, Eric Gorman, Martine Gulick, Aiden Haji, Monica Ivanchik, Polly Vanderputen, and Claire Wool.
Hold on Bonnie, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just gonna clarify that Eric Gorman is not being sworn in tonight.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
That's okay. Okay, hello everyone. Article forty-eight, section one thirty-seven in the Charter of the City of Burlington State. All officers of the city shall before resuming office take, subscribe, and file with the city clerk the oath that is presented in front of you, which you all receive by email. Please wait to contribute your signature until I notarize your oath. Pass on that. I will begin with attendance via roll call. When I state your name, please respond with present. Then we will recite the oath together. At the time of recital, you will choose to either repeat so help me God or under the pains and penalties of perjury. So Stephen Carey?
Yes.
Martine Gulick?
Yes.
Mike Fisher?
Yes.
Claire Wool?
Yes.
Monica Ivanchik?
Yes.
Aiden Haji?
Yes.
And Polly Vanderputen?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to confirm that all re-elected and newly-elected board members are present. We will now begin by reciting the oath. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. And then remember at the, when we recite the oath, at the time of the recital, you will choose to either repeat so help me God or under the pains and penalties of perjury. Let's see, okay. I, and then you say your name.
I.
I.
Mike Fisher.
Polly Vanderputen.
Do hereby affirm
Do hereby affirm
that I will faithfully discharge my duties
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
as a City of Burlington, Vermont School District School Board Commissioner
As a City of Burlington, Vermont School Board Commissioner.
to the best of my knowledge and ability
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Ability.
in accordance with law
In accordance with law.
And you either say, under the pains of penalties of perjury, or so help me God.
Under the pains of penalty.
Penalties of perjury.
Perjury.
So help me God.
You could have, you could say either one. Okay, you're sworn in.
Okay, and then the first order of business is to nominate a board chair. I have a nomination for the board chair.
Say again, Jeannie?
Not hearing her.
Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
There we go.
Okay.
I move to nominate Claire Wool as board chair.
Do I have a second?
Second?
I second the motion.
And?
I second the motion.
Pardon? Okay. Anyway, are there, is there any discussion? Is there any other nominations besides Claire Wool? Okay, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Any extensions? Nomination carries, welcome Claire Wool.
Thank you Commissioner Awel. The second order of business is to elect a vice chair. May I have a nomination for a board vice chair?
I would like to nominate, I'd like to nominate Jeff Wick for vice chair.
Thank you. May I have a nomination? Does anyone want to second that?
I'll second that.
Thank you Commissioner Fisher. Is there any other candidate that would like to be nominated as vice chair? Any discussion? So all those in favor of nominating Jeff Wick as vice chair? Was that? All those in favor of nominating Jeff Wick as vice chair, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? The motion carries, Jeff Wick will be vice chair. Thank you Jeff.
Thank you.
Next is our board nomination for our board clerk. May I have a nomination for board clerk?
I would like to move to nominate Michael Fisher as our board clerk.
Thank you Commissioner Ivanchik. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you Commissioner Wick. Is there any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of nominating Mike Fisher as board clerk, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Congratulations Commissioner Fisher, board clerk.
Bonnie, here is Eric, is on.
Okay, somebody needs to tell him then.
Or his, Eric? His name is coming up on, on the screen for me.
Me too.
Okay.
Commissioner Fisher, do you want to see if we can?
Get some audio? I think he's non-video.
I can't tell whether he's connected via audio. My suggestion is
Can you guys hear me?
There we go.
There you go.
Hello Commissioner Gordon, Gorman.
Can you hear me?
You can, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Excellent, you're on.
Okay, so shouldn't Bonnie give him the oath of office?
No.
No?
No? Yeah, get it done now. Is there any reason not to?
Oh.
Sorry Commissioner Wick, at this time I'll just suspend. Bonnie, do you, did you receive the paperwork from Commissioner Gorman?
No.
Okay, so Commissioner Gorman, we will follow up with you on, at our April fourteenth meeting for swearing in. For your swearing in.
Is that all we're doing today?
Today is the organizational meeting for being sworn in, yes.
And because I didn't have the, so I sent that stuff to you about thirty minutes ago, I realized that's too late and I apologize. Does that mean that I'm like sort of disqualified from participating?
No, let me, if you sent it, let me just make sure. If you sent it, then, then we're good. I can swear you in.
Thank you. So we'll pause.
That's all I needed was to receive it.
Great.
So I'll just go, I'll just read through this real quickly with him?
Yes, that would be ideal. Thank you.
Okay, so Commissioner Gorman, I'm gonna, I'm gonna recite the oath and then you repeat. And, and there's a part at the end where you can choose what you want to say, okay?
Okay.
Okay, so I, Eric Gorman.
I, Eric Gorman.
Do hereby affirm
Do hereby affirm
that I will faithfully discharge my duties
That I will faithfully discharge my duty.
as a City of Burlington, Vermont School District School Board Commissioner
As a City of Burlington, Vermont School Board Commissioner
to do the, to the best of my knowledge and ability
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
in accordance with law
In accordance with law.
And here you can choose what you want to say. Under the pains and penalties of perjury, or so help me God.
Under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Okay, now you're sworn in.
Great. Thank you Commissioner Gorman. We know that you were coming from work and we had texted you, so I apologize. We started the meeting, but thank you very much for joining in and thank you Bonnie.
Not at all, sorry, sorry to come in late, but glad I'm here.
Thank you, we are too. All right, next order of business is on the agenda, the motion to approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they would like to make to the agenda tonight? All right, seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Thank you Commissioner, thank you Commissioner Awel. All right, we will vote to approve the agenda. All those in favor of approving the, tonight's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, the motion passes, the agenda has been approved. Next on the agenda is the board clerk's report.
Thank you Chair Wool. So we are using Zoom for the first time, so I ask for everyone's patience, both commissioners and attendees. We do have thirteen members of the public attending. This meeting is being recorded to, in order to ensure accurate minutes and also as per guidance from the Secretary of State that if we can record meetings, we will, and this will be, we will send a link out afterwards so that people can watch a recording of this meeting. In the future, we hope to have streaming with RETN to Facebook and YouTube. Attendees are muted. School commissioners are not, as well as participants in the meetings such as Superintendent Obang and our esteemed Bonnie Ryder. We should please mute themselves if they're not speaking. Commissioners, as a reminder, if you wish to be recognized by the chair, please so indicate so verbally. You can also give a wave because we can see you. Voting can be done via voice vote. If there is a dissenting, one dissenting vote, then we need to do a roll call to make sure that's as per open meeting law. For members of the public, we will be doing public comment in a bit, and you can participate via the web or via phone. And I think that's it for now, so thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Fisher. Next on the agenda is public comment. Does the clerk, we don't have a sign-in sheet, but we have members, you can let us know.
Yeah, so here, I'll roll right into this. So members of the public, if you wish to speak and are connected via phone, hit star nine. So again, if you're connected via the phone, hit star nine. If you're connected via the computer or Zoom app, you're gonna look for the raise hand icon, it looks like hands, and if you click that, then I know that you would wish to speak. So I'm gonna go down and, and look at all the people who wish to speak and we'll recognize one person at a time and unmute them. And we ask that you limit your comment, comments to two minutes. So right now I do not see any members of the public who are raising their hands, so I'm gonna give it a little bit. So again, if you're on the phone, hit star nine. If you are on the web, you can hit raise hand. Okay, I saw Susan Amelda, raise your hand for a little bit. If you do want to speak, try and hit that button again. All right, third time, if you're on the phone, hit star nine. If you're on the web, look for the raise hand icon. Okay, I do not see any members of the public who are, who wish to speak. If you do wish to speak and, and we're not able to, you can submit your comments via email to MB Fisher, that's Michael Boy Fisher, F-I-S-H-E-R, at B S D V T dot O R G. Okay.
Great. Thank you Commissioner Fisher. Next on the report is the chair's report. So today, as, as it is every year in April, our organizational meeting where we swear on our officers and elect our, swear on our members, our commissioners, board members, and, and elect our officers. Today, we are very excited to have two new commissioners, Aiden Haji and Polly Vanderputen. And I would like to share their, welcome them and share amongst the public and our board members, a little bio about them. So we'll start with Aiden. Aiden is a long-term Burlington resident. He went through the Burlington School District and graduated from Burlington High School in two thousand fourteen. He recently graduated from the University of Vermont with a Bachelor of Arts in Anthropology. He brings a unique perspective on student issues and concerns. He has been actively involved in the Burlington community ever since he was in high school. Aiden strongly believes in the power of student leadership and understanding the exponential potential, exponential potential that each student possesses. Aiden is currently the youth coordinator at the Spectrum Multicultural Youth Program, which is incredibly valuable to all our Burlington students and our greater Burlington City. Sorry, he is part of a culturally diverse team that works to empower youth who identify as multicultural in the Chittenden County through various programs, case management, and advocacy. Aiden is proud to represent Ward Eight community members as we collectively move the school district forward. So again, congratulations, and we are so excited to work with you Aiden. Next is, yes, the round of applause. Welcome Yao. I know you're here.
He is.
Hi. Next, we welcome Polly Vanderputen. Polly is a full-time public high school teacher with twenty years' experience. She has taught in public schools in Chittenden County, in preschools in Vermont, and in France, and in night classes for adults in New York City. She is a graduate of McGill University with a Bachelor of Arts in Literature, Français, and Religious Studies, and she holds a Masters of Arts in Teaching from UVM. She currently teaches German and French at South Burlington High School. Polly is also a cellist, performing anything from traditional classical repertoire to deconstructed purely improvisational music. While her creative pursuits are primarily through music, she is passionate about the arts in general. Polly has lived in Ward Three since two thousand six. She has an eight-year-old daughter who attends one of the elementary schools and connections through her many families in the neighborhood. She sees all her neighbors as stakeholders in the public schools in Burlington, whether they are raising children now, have children who are grown, or do not have children. And she is honored to serve her dynamic vibrant community as school commissioner. So welcome Polly. Thank you. I do at this time want to acknowledge, since our last meeting, we, it was right during the time of COVID nineteen. I want to thank Commissioner Liz Curry and Commissioner Keith Pillsbury for their service. And I want to acknowledge all the hard work and dedication to our student community and our greater Burlington community for their service at this time. So again, great acknowledgement for Keith and Liz's service to our school district. Next on the agenda is our board, school board committee announcements. We want to acknowledge these committees that we instituted two years ago, and we'll still go forward with as we develop our, our, our board goals and our vision and the work that we'll encompass over the next year. So the Community Engagement Committee will be co-chaired by Kendra Sowers and Martine Gulick, thank you commissioners. Our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee will be co-chaired by Jeannie Walts and Monica Ivanchik, thank you commissioners. Our Finance and Facilities Committee will be co-chaired by myself, and I'm looking for another co-chair. Our Personnel and Curriculum Committee will be co-chaired by Kathy Awel and Stephen Carey, thank you commissioners. And our Policy and Governance Committee will be co-chaired by Commissioner Jeff Wick and Mike Fisher, thank you commissioners. And I did speak with both Aiden and Polly regarding committee work, and at this time, they will, they'll focus their energies on their board orientation and board work, and they are welcome to connect with every commissioner and committee, and based on their desired interests, will participate as, as desired in those committees. So thank you Polly and Aiden for your dedication to your orientation, and we welcome you on any of those committees. Next on the agenda is the Equity and Inclusion Report. I want to acknowledge this report, and I want to acknowledge the district leader, leadership that presented this report back in February to the DE and I Committee with co-chairs Monica Ivanchik and Commissioner Liz Curry. We all received this report in February, and we want to acknowledge Karen Vogel, Victor Prusak, Miriam Ediston Kessing, Kristy Galis, Henry Sparks, and Laura Nugent for their time and energy in, in presenting this report. And per Superintendent Obang, once, once we restore back to normal practices, like any report, this report will guide our board work. And so I did copy, again commissioners today, just so it's relevant and in your inbox on this date, on the, in the organizational meeting, for you to review that report, it's expected of you, and we will discuss that at a later date with those district leaders that I thanked for their work in, in presenting it to the board. And with that, next is Superintendent Obang, welcome. Commissioner Gulick?
Do we get to have board reflection?
Ah, yes, we can do that. I have it in public comment. I skipped over that by mistake.
Okay, sorry. I was just wondering if the new, as someone who has a last name that's often mispronounced, I was wondering if our new commissioners could just say their names for us to make sure that we're getting them right.
Great idea, thank you. Polly and Aiden?
You have to unmute though.
Yeah.
My name is pronounced Aden Haji.
And my name is pronounced Polly Vanderputen, like putting on the ritz. But there is family descent around it. I'm never offended by variations.
Aden. Sorry, I pronounced Aden, sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you, thank you Commissioner Gulick. Are there any other board reflections at this time? All right. Superintendent Obang?
Thank you. Let me first congratulate and welcome Commissioner Haji to the board and Commissioner Vanderputen to the board. Thank you for stepping up and contributing to our students. And Commissioner Vanderputen McGill, good Canadian school job. So yeah, the, the chair has asked me to do an update on the COVID nineteen and the progress with our district. Hopefully you've all been receiving the updates and information that we've been sending out, so you can reflect on that. But I will give a quick overview generally of the state of our district. First of all, I'd say that thanks to everyone who has sent comments, contributions, and also even people who've sent some critiques that's helped us make things better in terms of operations. But I think we've had overwhelming support from our community, from our both, I've heard from some students as well, so interesting around some of the supports that's, that's happened going forward. Let me give you a few quick highlights. You know that we've been receiving education guidance from the Agency of Education, almost on a weekly and sometimes daily basis in terms of actions we're to take. So just to let people know, sometimes we get communications around, people want us to take action on a certain item or information that they want, but we're waiting for guidance before we take that action, so we can make sure that we're still in line with the expectations from the state level. So continue to look for that, and we'll try to be as expeditious as possible. Let me give a big thank you before I forget to all our staff who have been, all staff, I mean a range of staff who've been working, some in the office behind the scenes, on food services, childcare, all kinds of nuggets in between that have been happening while we've been through the state. Staff have been great and have been, have been there with support. So food services, I know you've seen the updates around food services, that's running quite well with our food services project and Doug Davis running that. We delivered three thousand meals in the first week, and we've averaged at least a thousand meals every week, and that operation continues to go. And even with the increase in the COVID nineteen, we still have our staff volunteers coming out and supporting, provide food around that. And I'm gonna talk about April break later, but we will be providing food during April break as well. So those communities, those students and families that have been coming out, will have their same regular schedule going out. Childcare, I want to give a shout out to Kristy Galis and Victor Prusak and the team around that that's engineering that project around our childcare. This is an optional service that the governor has relieved districts out, but we felt that this was a critical piece to support the community. And this is one way the district can contribute to the community. And so we're supporting essential workers and first responders through childcare. And we've got a hybrid approach, you can look online and look at that. And anyone who has not been contacted as one of our parents and there's a essential worker and still needs support, you can still contact us and we can still look for ways to support you. I know that I've had some great comments from some of our participants saying that they wouldn't be able to do what they're doing now without this service. So I'm glad we're able to provide it, and we will also continue to provide this service through the April break as well, too. The, the big piece of information that's coming forward right now is moving from maintenance of learning to continuity of learning. I know there's probably some confusion around these terms, and parents are saying, you know, what does that mean, what does this mean? And the maintenance of learning was really, that's what it was, just maintenance. Students receive work that, that would keep them occupied and stimulated in terms of their mental capacities, and teachers would support in terms of ensuring that they had any supports around that. Now we're moving to the continuity of learning where there'll be remote instruction around some of the lessons and the materials around that. And we're working through that, we're sending our plan to the AOE tomorrow, and then we have to get some feedback, and then we should have a final expectations by Monday that we'll send out to all families and be able to deliver that. We're paying special attention to what the work we're gonna do around ELL students and specialized students. The work around their supports do not translate as easy through electronic forms. So our staff are working on how we can do that as best as, as possible. So look for that coming up. On Thursday, my director Phillips and I will be holding a video conference around continuity of learning, where we're gonna answer some of the questions that we receive from parents and give some expectations around parent expectations, what's gonna happen with their students, and lay a little bit of groundwork in terms of what you'll see once we get this up and running. So hopefully that'll help, give some people some insights around that. And then we'll put a hard copy document out that describes it, once we get the feedback from the AOE and say this is the final version. So hopefully people can receive that, and if you're available, please tune in and we'll be able to share some information with you. We will videotape it, so it'll be on our website. So if you're not available, the time that we have it, you can always go and visit it. And I suspect we will probably do another one, because I'm really looking at, the first week is to start implementation. The week of the break, there'll be a break for students and families, which I know I've heard from some parents are looking for that, that break as well, too. But our staff are gonna continue to work, so some of us worked during the break, so we'll be able to revisit what happened the first week and maybe fine-tune some of the practices in preparation for the next step in week two. So we'll probably ask you for your feedback after week one, and we can hopefully make it a little bit easier on you and try to support you, supporting our, our students. My main focus still is around the mental health and the social well-being of our students. Being housebound for this period of time can be draining, and people can start to want to lash out and behave. So I encourage parents and students to, you know, get your exercise, eat well, and try to mentally balance even the work that you do so that you don't feel the stress and anxiety during, during this time. Okay, April break, that was a big question around April break. So we have gotten some guidance around following our calendar, and so we will follow the calendar, so there will be an April break. We have received waivers for our snow days, so we won't have to make up the snow days when we return back to school. And I'll give you this date, May eighth is the magical date. That is the date that the AOE will give us instruction, whether if we're going back to school or we're not, and what the last day of school will be, whether even if we're still in remote learning without adding days on that. So I suspect by then they'll have enough information to say, okay, this is it, you're not coming back, and school's gonna So I suspect by then they'll have enough information to say, okay, this is it. You're not coming back and school's going to end on this date. And we'll be able to move forward with that. Trying to think if there's anything else. Talk about devices and electronics. I'll talk about this tomorrow as well too. We've implemented a plan that we have serviced all our students from grade three to high school with Chromebooks. And that's in line with our plan that we've developed. We don't see that as a real need for K to two, but we know that special ed parents may have a need to have that assistive device. And so we don't have enough. We don't have that many to distribute to everyone, but we are, we are going to target special ed parents if they want a device to support their their K to two students during that prime time. If you still have not received a Chromebook and you need one, and I say need, I know many people have already, please contact your principal and your principal will be able to facilitate that to happen. Also, you will see hard copy materials on Monday at the food sites. And if you're not able to attend the food sites, contact your principal and they will facilitate so you can get a hard copy if you need one. When we started continuing learning, we'll have a cycle where people can pick up hard copies as well and still get the information on the on electronic as well too. Many people have been accessing Power School for their classroom pieces. I know there's been some challenges and it's coming from the vendor. In the update that was sent out, you'll see there's a connection for you to contact Power School directly and they could send you to the right website, whatever, so they can correct the issue at their end. We can't do that, but that's information for those as a few people who've been having some challenge. You can imagine they've had insurmountable use of Power School across the nation because of the remote learning that's happening. So their their system is kind of overwhelmed and packed. And the last thing I'll say is around the encouraging physical distancing. We are, we have closed our playgrounds to discourage people from going to the playgrounds and being in close proximity. So you might, you'll see signs on our playgrounds to to close those those sites, to set down. And with that, open to any questions from the board, if they have any questions or clarifications around some information. Once again, let me just remind everyone, Thursday we'll have our video conferencing around continuity learning. So if you can jump on, that'd be great, but we will send out afterwards, once we get the feedback back, a hard copy communication that explains the detail of the next steps in continuity learning. Okay, over to you, Claire Chirwell.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Obang, and thank you for your updates. We received one last night that was extensive and I know I'll forward to Commissioner Van Putten and Commissioner Haji so that they can review it if they haven't already. And at this time, a commissioner had reached out or one or two, and I had said Superintendent Obang today, if there are follow up questions that you have from your constituents with regards to our COVID-19 updates, I would ask that you forward those questions from your constituents or your own personal questions to myself. And that way I can develop a Google Doc and send to the superintendent and he could answer them via email to us so that we can get you the responses that you need. And tonight we can go around and have a brief reflection or any, if there's any pressing questions tonight. I know that front porch forum update just went out. There was questions with regards to the food and the cost of the food. And there's an outline. We also received a robocall if we were a B S D parent, making sure and imploring families within the district to fill out the proper forms based on the federal stimulus. So at this time, thank you again for the update and for your thorough updates online to the community at large and acknowledging our communication specialist as well, Russ Elek for his work and Bonnie Ryder who is also supporting. So they've been informative and timely. So if you, Commissioner Fisher, I'll ask you to orchestrate if anyone wants to ask a follow up question from the report with Superintendent Obang. We can do so at this time. And bear in mind, if it's a longer question and he wants to expand upon it, we'll do that offline.
Anybody raise their hand if they want to speak and I will make sure you unmute it. I see Martine was the first quick. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks, Yael, for the update. Can you hear me?
Yep.
I just want to, I think it's nice to be able to ask questions in open forum. And I had a constituent, a few actually, that I wanted to get back to pretty quickly. And I think it's a straightforward question. I've just been asked about April break and whose decision that was.
That's a direct decision from the agency. We've been kind of toying with it for months in terms of what to do with that, whether there'll be any counties or whatever. And so the direction was to follow our calendar. And I know superintendents have been in Chittney County, I've been having conversations around that. And so I think you'll see across the state, everyone, if they had a break, they'll be executing a break. I know I toyed with it myself initially because I thought, okay, well, if we can just continue on through the break, then that means we don't have to extend the year, right, to make up that that time. But in their analysis, I think it's not going to make a difference. So they wanted to continue on with the calendar.
And did the commissioner give any rationale behind that decision other than just sticking with the schedule?
Yeah, actually, around the April break, there are other factors. There's contractual agreements we have in our collective agreements. We have a number of units that have the right to have that break in their contracts. And I know that they've been exercising that right at the state level, saying we expect to have our contractual days. So that's part of it as well too. So we would have had some of those challenges vaulted. We do have some some contracts that have that in their contracts. And we would have had to either negotiate that or, you know, receive grievances if we didn't allow them to have that break as well. So that I know that played heavily on the state's decision in terms of trying to keep things moving smoothly as possible.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to ask a question? Raise your hand. Okay, guess it's my turn. I got a couple of questions. Thank you, Superintendent Obang. I know, can't imagine how much work it is behind the scenes and for you and your staff. And I appreciate the thorough communication that you've been doing. We all know that our community expects that. So first question is around standards for live classes, live remote classes. In the beginning, some teachers were using Zoom and as we all know, there's a lot of Zoom bombing and everything is, do we have a standard now across the district?
Well, yeah, so we've been working on that plan. So we will submit the plan tomorrow to the A O E. And our plan does look at having standardized platforms that we're going to use at each division area, right? So we'll have the A O E will vet that and they'll approve the two platforms that we're looking at and say, yeah, those are good. Those are things we can support or not. But I think it'll be helpful for everyone to be using similar, if not the same type of system.
So my second question is around, more around systematic approach. Because from my experience, my discussions with constituents and other parents is varying degrees of experience within a school and across schools. So can you speak to what we can expect when we move to the continuity of learning and what you and your team are doing to make sure we have consistent processes and experiences across the district?
Right. Great question. Tune in Thursday. No, the, that is a question that has come up a couple of times. I had some parents reach out about that. But the challenge is not just for the parents, it's also for our staff, right? Not everyone has the same capacity with all different platforms. So we're trying to narrow it down to platforms that we can make sure that we can in service our teachers who don't have the facility for it. And they can get help from their colleagues because they're going to be using the same platforms. So I anticipate in the first week, it might be some technical glitches in terms of people trying to use things they haven't used in the past. But then we should get into a routine that we know that we're using this platform for, you know, at this school, for all grade threes to fives or whatever. And we'll have that detailed in the information we'll put out after we get back from the A O E for parents so they'll know which platforms. And I suspect we may have to try to figure out some way to support parents in accessing, giving some professional training around how to how to get into those things. But I have to think about that too, but how do you do that without getting into a platform to talk about it, right?
Yeah.
So maybe hard paper or something, but we know that's an issue because we've had that concern already. So.
And you anticipated my question about offline learning as well. And my last question is around rigor and expectation. So I've heard from a number of parents who are looking for more and they were concerned that our maintenance program was not enough for their child. And can you give any kind of preview as a difference in rigor and expectation between the maintenance of learning and the continuity of learning programs?
Yeah, absolutely. And maintenance of learning was really meant to be just maintenance. I know I've had feedback from parents on both sides. Some parents are saying they're getting too much work. Some parents are saying they want assessment and instruction right away, right? But now we're here, we're continually learning. So my expectation will be for teachers to be doing instruction to students and they'll be doing some level of assessment. We're still working that out in terms of what will happen at each grade level. And we have to get your approval from A O E to ensure that what we've put out is acceptable. But I think in talking with our principals, they've been itching to get to this level because, I mean, that's what they do, right? In terms of instruction. And I know many teachers are ready, kind of ready to get to that level as well too. So on Thursday, we'll have, I'll be able to speak probably a little bit more detail about it and have Stephanie give some specifics around the process around that. But parents will see a difference in instruction through remote learning as opposed to just the maintenance of, you know, how are you doing kind of thing. So there will be some of that happen. And I understand the concerns, especially at the higher grades where you have to really learn skills if you're doing mathematics or science, things that build on a prerequisite. And students might feel they're missing something because they don't have an instructor. So those are challenges that we're going to have to take on. It's a new world, right? We don't know how long we'll be doing this. So we have to prepare and who knows what will happen in the future. But I know other jurisdictions have started to address it because they started before us. And so I'll be looking to to them around some of those areas. I actually looked at a document from Singapore today and they had some great work that they were doing and they had some great systems that were happening. So maybe we can steal some of their strategies as well.
Okay, thank you. Polly?
Um. You can hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so I can address this directly to Superintendent Obang? Okay, I was wondering what you're hearing from students. Like I understand that at the elementary level and maybe middle school level, probably parents are advocating for them in terms of workload, like if it's too much or too little. And I'm wondering if you're hearing directly from them in some capacity and also what you're hearing from high school students, if they're, how they're finding the adjustment and if it's enough work or too much work or how you're getting that information from them.
Right. I've personally only received maybe about five or six directly from students, but I know our principals and teachers are getting communications back and forth from students. But I've had parents who are advocating for their students and the same though, it's on both sides. I get the parents are saying it's too much. I can't, you know, manage. They may have multiple children and some parents are saying, I need more, right? And I need my teacher to instruct on this piece. And so there's that challenge there. And we also have at the same time, as we move to continually learning, our staff, our teachers are also parents that have maintained their own children. So they're going to have to figure that out, balance that out. And we're going to try to give them some systemic approaches to be consistent and give enough time and planning. And so I'm hoping that we'll be able to meet, if not all, most people's needs in terms of doing that. The real challenge, as I said earlier, is around E L and special ed, right? When it's really differentiated. So we're going to really count on our case managers and our E L teachers to really be hands on in directly connecting with those families and students around that work. Because everything doesn't translate as well through electronic form, right?
Can I follow up?
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so along those lines, has there been any conversation or have there been any guidelines from the A O E around transcripts? Like what this is going to look like? Is there an asterisk? Is there a pass fail recommendation? Is there any kind of discussion around that?
Yeah, that's been one of the most challenging pieces because we've got a great team that kind of anticipating some of these, but some of these questions you have. But the A O E is also trying to keep up the pace and we've got no guidance around how to do assessments. What's it going to do in terms of report cards and all of that kind of information, nothing. So I mean, and I think they're going, you know, day by day, week by week in terms of, so I'll tell you what's happening at the superintendent level. We get these questions and we have these conversations and we share them to the state. And we say, we need answers on this. And they say, yes, we're going to work on it. Hang on, there's guidance coming. So we're sitting there waiting and our teams are ready to go, right? And so I, in the past, have made some decisions ahead of the state coming out with, I said, we got to kind of move. The challenge with that is if we do something that the state comes in and says, no, you're not, you can't do that, then all that work for staff, you know, is lost. So we're trying to be cautious. I'm glad they gave us some timelines for the continuity of learning this one. So we'll, we'll send our report and hopefully get some feedback back. And I can anticipate us sending questions probably daily in the first week or so. Like those questions you asked were precisely the questions that we've been thinking about, what's going to happen with the marks and all those, all those kind of things. And kids who are up for scholarships at schools and need things sent in and athletes who were doing, you know, there's a range of, I really feel for those kids, this is life changing. So we're going to have to do the best we can to try to figure this out. And I'm hoping that the agency continues to be receptive to our feedback. They have been thus far. We know sometimes the turnaround has been slow, but they seem to be kind of listening and saying, oh, okay, so that's where it's going. And giving us that flexibility at some point.
Great. At this time, I think what we'll do is, because the the goal of this meeting will be to, you know, conclude this meeting, but that direct commissioners and our public to join Superintendent Obang this Thursday, 3 P M. And in looking on the website, and I'll check in with you, I know it said that you'll likely use Zoom for this conference and you'll be working to stream it for Facebook and YouTube pages. So we'll, we'll check in and be able to share out with our community how people can participate in that if their work schedule is available this Thursday at 3 P M.
Yeah, absolutely. And we'll send a communication out probably late Wednesday or Thursday morning about, here it is. And we are going to videotape it. So people who who are working or tied up, they'll be able to view it later on on our site and follow up with that. So you'll get that communication. You can send it out to constituents as well too, but we'll be sending it to parents.
Okay, great.
Okay, let me do one thank you before you close up around the, we've gotten some really good feedback around the communications and updates. And I have to tell you that, yes, it's partly, you know, Bonnie and our communication and Russ and our communication. But we've got a team of people who are feeding me information constantly and that's what we pull from. So without them feeding up the information, I wouldn't be able to get out the detailed information that we have. So thanks to all our directors and supervisors and our staff who are working around the clock to ensure that we have a lot of information for our parents. I want to kind of publicly acknowledge that, that, you know, any product you see, I've got a team behind me that's helping me to establish that communication. So.
Thank you for that. And a follow up to that is again, your communication and your expectations of your building principles. So that when a constituent has a concern, to go to their building principal first, that as a supplement to your COVID-19 updates for the district, that if there is a building principal that is, you know, communicating out, those are your expectations as well to engage with their school communities?
Absolutely. They have the, once we've sent out our communication, principals are now getting into the practice of communicating with their communities. And they will have to now with the continued learning because there's going to be information each week around the learning with their, with their teachers and their staff. So you'll see that happen more on a regular basis. I would say for parents, if you see anything that you need support for your student, go directly to the principal. They have resources of individuals they can fan out to. People can continue to send me suggestions and questions after my updates. I've had a few of those which have been really good and would be able to answer right away. Or I would direct them to a principal if it's something that they can resolve for them. So I would encourage our commissioners to do the same. If there's a constituent question and a specific around a specific school, please direct them to the principal and the principal will follow up. And the principal can follow up back with you. And the principal can follow up back if you, when that loop has been closed.
Great. Thank you for that. If there's nothing else from any commissioner, at this time, I would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Would someone like to make a motion? So Commissioner Carey is first and Commissioner Alw is second. The motion. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone, and, and big kudos. And thank you to Commissioner Fisher for organizing all this and managing so effectively and efficiently. So thank you.
Fisher, do you want a job?
Thanks, Mike.
Yes.
Yeah, send me to the beach.
Good night.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye.